All right, well, it looks like we're at 6:30, so why don't we start the meeting? Um, did you say Chief was on yet? I don't think you did.
Uh, I did not see Steve yet.
Okay, so why don't we start the meeting if, um, Doreen can do the roll call? Then we'll go there and then if Chief isn't in, we'll do, um, Ryan first. Okay?
Okay. All right, roll call. Suzanne Touch?
Here.
And will you be recording?
No, I will not.
Pete Merkel?
Here. I'm not recording.
Okay, thank you. Jim Meals?
Here, not recording.
Mark Watkins?
I'm here and not recording.
Ralph Touch?
Here and not recording.
Colin Boyer? Will you be recording? Okay. John Rothenberger?
I am here and not recording.
Mayor Gore?
I am here and not recording.
Andy George?
I am here and not recording.
Chris Young?
Here and recording for the borough purposes only, not to be published.
Okay, and Craig Conrad?
Here and not recording.
And Ryan Kern?
I'm here, not recording.
And the guest that we have, Sharice Moser, will you be recording the meeting?
No, no, I'm not recording, just listening.
Okay, thank you.
And Steve is joining us, so if you want to give him a second. And it looks like we have another unnamed one. Yeah, it's, uh, Steve who just came on here from my phone. Yep, you know, you're named. There was another one that, uh, apparently your phone knows who you are.
0476.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that you?
That's Denton.
Oh, Denton, yeah.
We were, we were, we're almost worried there, Denton. We're almost worried, Denton.
Steve, if you're ready, why don't you take it?
Excuse me, Suzanne. Let me just ask my two questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Chief Stensky, will you be recording the meeting?
I will not.
Okay, thank you. And Denton Shucker, will you be recording the meeting?
No.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, Suzanne, you can take over.
Thank you, Doreen. Okay, Steve, you're up.
All right, everybody. The police report for February was emailed out, uh, late this afternoon. A couple of inches brings to your attention. We were dispatched to over thirty calls for vehicles that were disabled, stuck in snowbanks during the big storm in February. So naturally, in addition to running around trying to take care of all that stuff, because of what was happening during those storms and immediately after the storms, our, our, uh, traffic enforcement statistics, of course, were way down for February because we had many weather issues to deal with. One of the feel-good things that we did manage to do during all the chaos of the storm, we'd gotten a call for a Fleetwood Borough resident who couldn't get out of her alley. Uh, she fought, she was performing to get to work. She's had a critical mission. She was one of only, I think, two or three nurses uh, that were going to staff the Topton home during that blizzard. So, uh, Sergeant Al Schaefer actually gave her a ride, uh, to work, uh, to make sure that she got there and those patients had the proper care. So that was a good thing for us. Uh, one of the things that raised, uh, eyebrows for us, police were dispatched to a call in the area of Richmond and Arch Street. It almost sounded like a running gun battle from how we were dispatched. Turned out, we identified it was a bunch of kids who were having an airsoft war amongst each other. Uh, we did, we verified the best we could that there was no property damage in the area, and then we let the kids know, uh, the, uh, what could possibly happen if somebody mistook what they were doing for real firearms while they were playing their games in that residential area there. So that was resolved. Uh, the, uh, we did get a call for a rape that had allegedly occurred over the summer involving some students in the school district that's still under investigation. Uh, we got, um, at least half a dozen calls throughout February for people who were falling victim to, uh, Publishers Clearinghouse scams. Uh, not everybody fell victim to it, but the people who did lost amounts of money ranging from five to $5,000. Um, you know, just, I would stress again, we say this all the time, but the IRS, Publishers Clearinghouse, nobody is going to make you give them money over the phone in order to keep you from going to jail or to win a prize. They are not going to tell you to run all over town buying gift cards and then scratching them off and reading the numbers over the phone. So please, make sure you socialize that with, uh, any of your neighbors who may not be as, uh, internet savvy. We also are investigating an identity theft where a township resident had his identity used to make a purchase of a $70,000 car down in Texas. It was basically a fake driver, Pennsylvania driver's license that had all of his personal information on it with somebody else's photo. So, uh, we're still following up on that. So please, again, along with all of the scams that are out there for a variety of things, make sure that you, uh, frequently check your credit reports to make sure no unauthorized purchases are being made in your name. Uh, our newest part-time officer, Officer Beckacy, is, uh, starting his phase two of the FTO program where he's in a car by himself and other officers are working. So hopefully, in short order, he'll be able to, uh, start pulling some actual shifts for us, uh, on his own. He's currently at a state with his full-time job at some of the riots out west. Um, what are, another personnel thing that I'm asking for, I'd ask, uh, for conditional approval to hire, uh, retired trooper Corey Remp to serve as our part-time criminal investigator. I worked with Corey a number of times when I was with the state police. He served on a variety of different task forces and has a lot of, uh, connections and experience in conducting criminal investigations. As a matter of fact, uh, when I assigned his background check to Sergeant Al Schaefer, he said that he dealt with him several times when he was a member of the vice unit to handle, uh, vice-related issues in and around Fleetwood. So he's a bit familiar with the area as well. So, uh, he has, uh, passed his certification test for MOPAC to get recertified. Uh, the only thing we had to do is wrap up his, uh, wrap up his background check, which is good so far. He has, uh, he scheduled Thursday for the psych evaluation, and we're waiting results from the physical. So if all that stuff comes through, again, I would ask that, uh, uh, permission from council to go ahead and hire him to fill that critical role for us. All the officers, uh, Corey Remp, R-E-M-P.
Could we possibly do a motion now on that, Suzanne?
Sure, that's where we're headed. So if anyone wants to make that motion, conditional on, uh, passing the background tests and the other requirements of the police, uh, police, uh, office, then, uh, we can make that motion now and then assuming everything goes forward, it'll be already, or it'll already in order. So do I have that motion on the floor? Thank you, Colin. Do I have a second, please? Okay, we've got a motion by Mr., um, Boyer and a second by Mr. Touch. Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll take the vote then, please. Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll.
Okay. Suzanne Touch?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yeah.
And that's everyone.
Team, I'm sorry that we interrupted you. We want to get that little business taken care of. You want to go on with your report?
Sure, thank you very much, everybody. Uh, all the officers, uh, with the exception of Officer Quinn, have completed their annual legal update training that's required by the state. Officer Quinn is scheduled in the next few days here to take care of his. Um, I, I just finished, Sergeant Al Schaefer got his TASER instructor certification renewed early, late last fall. I just completed mine last week here in Kutztown. So we'll be able to be, uh, continue our certification so we could do our, uh, annual certs for everybody else in the department. Also additionally, uh, I completed, uh, the Forsigns Institute de-escalation instructor training. So as we begin to conduct our, uh, our, our springtime qualification period, we'll be incorporating some de-escalation training uh, in order to make us more effective to meet the needs of those folks and those instances we're responding to. We did place order for ammunition, uh, projected activities. We did it and, and issues. We did have several issues with the railroad street crossing, uh, malfunctioning. I think we have that pretty well knocked out now. There was, uh, partly some programming, partly some equipment that had to be replaced. But that seems to be, uh, working fairly well now. Um, aggressive driving, we'll be having, uh, we have an aggressive driving grant that was awarded to us, so we'll be doing some extra enforcement throughout our entire jurisdiction between March 18th and April 25th. And, uh, we'll be participating, uh, in two, uh, coffee or cocoa with the copper type events. One on March 27th from nine to 12 in Topton by the pool and one on April 3rd from 11 to 2 over by Fleetwood Beverage. And, uh, just for council's, uh, uh, for council's knowledge, from April 13th through May 8th, I believe it is, I'll be on military leave. And so I'll be, have intermittent access by phone and email. And Sergeant Al Schaefer will be available for any immediate issues that come up. Depending on any questions, that's what I have for my report.
Steve, it looks like you're good to go, but if we, as usual, if we need you, we'll, we can always text you and just advise that we want you to drop, drop back in or we'll send you whatever questions we have.
Yep, no problem. I am, uh, here getting ready to walk into the Topton meeting, so I'll be available, uh, for however late you need me.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Good night.
Excuse me, Suzanne.
Yes.
I believe I saw Karen Crosley joined us. Can I just ask her our normal questions?
And it looks like Megan Craft might have as well.
Okay, uh, Karen Crosley, will you be recording the meeting tonight?
No.
And Meg Craft, will you be recording the meeting at all?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Suzanne.
No problem. Um, so now we're going to move on to Ryan Kern with his report on engineering, please.
Okay, good evening, folks. Can you confirm that you can hear me?
Yep, we can.
All right, the first item on our engineer's report, as always, is the, the annual MS4 reporting, as well as the pollution reduction plan items. Uh, we do continue to provide assistance to the borough regarding your annual MS4 tasks as needed and as requested by Chris or Craig. Uh, we did circulate an email with a split, uh, applicable staff training and public education materials for use by the borough and residents by, uh, July. Now, regarding the treatment plant tour, uh, there was a connection made between the borough and Adele Shade from the Science Research Institute. Uh, she will be coordinating with Craig Conrad if they ever want to help teach and train children about wastewater treatment. I know I did a similar tour as a, as a student and it was kind of eye-opening when you walk into a wastewater treatment plant as a kid. Next item, Willow Creek Restoration Project. So the DEP is set to review the plan, uh, where we remove the bio-retention area from Maple Avenue. Uh, we are preparing project documents for the borough to review, and, uh, the documents are to be included in the borough's final payment request to the grant source, which is the, uh, DEP Growing Greener Program. Okay, in regards to the Berks County MS4 Steering Committee, which the borough is a member, the committee is going to be circulating information to all the members about a video contest for students. Uh, the students are encouraged to create, uh, a PSA, a Public Service Announcement video about watershed. Uh, all entries will be available to the Berks MS4 members for posting and use towards your, uh, public involvement credit for MS4. Such things could be Earth Day celebrations, uh, the fish rodeo, um, stream cleanups, things of that nature. Second item under the Steering Committee is a reminder regarding rain barrels. The, uh, the Berks County Conservation District is offering rain barrel workshops. Uh, the borough would be responsible for advertisement and hosting the event, and it could be in-person or virtual at this time.
There you go, Suzanne. Jump on it.
Well, I'll add that to my list. No problem.
Ryan, can you, uh, can you send me?
Anybody who's running that, uh, rain barrel, uh, plan or would like that, to introduce that to the community, keep the, please keep them posted.
Yeah, Ryan, if you could.
If you're, need someone to do that and you, well, council is interested in that, I could follow up on that.
We've been talking about that for a few years now, right, Suzanne? So, um, that would be great.
Having a rain barrel use and contest and, um, we have. We just didn't, it didn't get off the ground and then COVID hit. So maybe this is an opportunity to revisit that.
Okay. I think I have all the info.
Chris, Chris Young, did you have a question for me?
Oh, that's good.
Okay. All right, the, uh, second item on our engineer's report is Arch Street, West Arch Street, near the park. Uh, we did prepare a progress report, uh, for the borough regarding our study, the feasibility study that's commenced. Uh, based on current drainage patterns and the volume of runoff anticipated for this area, it's becoming very clear that the existing pipes are undersized within Arch Street. I'm sure that's no surprise to anybody. Uh, in addition, more space is being requested to infiltrate runoff prior to the discharge to the creek. So we have sent an email to, uh, Craig and Chris, um, indicating that we need to do an infiltration test within the street. Uh, Kristi Meldner from my office has been coordinating with Craig, uh, to, to set that up. Craig, I didn't see if there was a, a specific date that that was scheduled for. Has that?
We're looking at the eight, yeah, we're looking at the 18th or 19th right now.
Okay. All right, so the infiltration test, basically what's this going to do? It's going to allow us to figure out if the soils underneath Arch Street are capable of, first, we'll store the water within pipes and then through perforation or a stone bottom to the pipe, infiltrate that water back into the ground before it ever runs off and gets to the creek. So that's what, that's where we're at in the study at the moment. One thing we're looking to do is have large, what I'll call oversized pipes within the street. And they'll be approximately 28 to 36 inches, depending on what the calculations require. And like I said, at that point, then the water will infiltrate into the ground while overflow will, will drain to the creek. So we'll have a, a better understanding of what can be accommodated at next month's council meeting. And the final item on my engineer's report is the Willow Creek Pedestrian Bridge. We are assisting the architect, which is Kleckner Laux, as requested, whenever the borough or the architect reaches out to us. Uh, we did send them base plans, including some spot elevations for that area. And it is anticipated that our structural department within my company is going to be assisting them with the foundation design and the abutments. So with that said, that's, that's the end of all the items on my engineer's report. Uh, I welcome any questions or comments from council or anybody else at this time.
Anybody have any questions for Ryan?
I feel like I do, but I can't think of any, so.
Okay, well, as always, you know, we're always available, so either reach out to myself or have any questions or comments funneled through, uh, Chris or Craig.
Sure, Brian. Thank you so much for your time. If we have any questions that bubble up toward, you know, during the meeting, we'll get back to you on them, okay?
Okay, great.
Sure, thank you. Okay, then now we're going to go and open the phone lines. I know that we've got a few guests. Um, Ms. Moser, did you have something that you wanted to discuss particularly?
Uh, no, I, like I said, I'm just here to listen to the evening.
Sure, well, welcome. I hope that you, uh, I hope that it's informative and if you do have any questions, please feel free to ask, okay?
Thank you. I will.
No problem. Uh, Karen, I know that you were, um, going to be, uh, talking about, um, record donation regarding the clock tower. So let's move on to Denton. So I think you're coming up in a few minutes. So Denton, how about you? Do you have anything you want to talk about?
When, when you get to the water department, I saw Craig's email concerning, uh, and I'm interested in how much water draw they want in addition to the discharge to the sewer system. It's a pretty decent-sized number of gallons and I'm sure they're going to draw more water.
Okay, so that, we'll talk about, will we get to that question then? And Meg, you're joining us for the rec board as well, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, well then we're going to move on to Andy George and the Richmond Water Agreement Resolution.
Thank you. So we have a resolution for consideration tonight, and the resolution is designed to, uh, cover the signing of an amendment to an intermunicipal water service agreement that's been in place, um, for, for a number of years. Uh, it's been amended from time to time based on, uh, properties coming onto the water system in Richmond Township. So we, um, recently amended that, that list of properties again, and it deals with properties on Missalem Springs Road, Poplar Street, Ridge, South Willow. I don't want to read them all off, but, um, Criss Cross, West Main Street, uh, Park Road, Wallfield Lane. So the list has been amended. It, it's been, uh, passed through the authority uh, for consideration. It's also was verified through Craig. So the list has been updated. The agreement's ready to, to be amended reflecting the, the current list. Um, and that's what this resolution is about.
Does anybody have any questions for Andy? Based on the, um, update to the Richmond Water Agreement to add new property? Okay, that being the case, um, can I have a motion to accept that resolution?
It's Pete. I'll make the move.
Okay, so I have a motion to accept the Richmond Water Agreement amendments. Do I have a second from anybody?
No, can I?
Thank you, Mark. So I've got a, um, motion to accept the resolution by Mr. Merkel, a second by Mr. Watkins. Any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, if I could trouble you to close the roll then, please.
Okay, Suzanne Touch?
Agreed.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch? No, I did not, but, okay. Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and that's everyone.
Thank you so much. That resolution carries then. So if you get that ready for our signature, we can go from there.
Okay.
Do you have anything else, Andy, you want to report on?
No, that, that's it, Suzanne.
Perfect. Okay. Anybody have anything for Andy they want to discuss? All right, then we're going to move on to the park and pool. Uh, it looks like Mr. Touch has the pool updates.
We just wanted to let everybody know that Mary's getting started heading towards the summer and she's going to look for lifeguards and set up the routine as usual and she's going to meet with the requirements that the COVID. So at the moment, we're presuming everything will be pretty clear by then, but we'll be prepared if it's not. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay. On to the van shell proposal and grant application. Looks like Mr. Watkins?
Chris, do you want to share or do you want me to share?
Uh, we, uh, everybody, Mark, has the copies, so I don't know if we have to share. In fact, typically, we haven't in the past.
Oh, okay. This is my first time doing this, so bear with me. Typically, do you just walk through?
I would just, yeah, maybe just go reference page one, page two.
Okay. Page one is the introduction. Page two is a former van shell. Anyone who's been by the park recently, you'll notice it doesn't look like this anymore. We all know that the, the van shell had some rot and we tore it down. The, um, the committee met and we reviewed proposals for a new van shell. Good page three, slide three. This is the, uh, one of the proposals we evaluated, um, to vary, um, it's a beautiful design, if you will. Trying to think of the right word here. Um, it involves one roof covering both the stage and the seating area, and the roof fans out to cover most of the seating. This is an example, um, obviously in another location. It is a little bit of a pricey option. Go to the next page. You can see the Bristol style from Bristol Township. I alluded to the pricey option. We're guessing, it's an estimate that it's about a million dollars plus. If we did a 20-year loan, it would be 80,000 a year. Um, it would require, um, a budgetary increase of 30,000 a year equal to about 0.2 mil tax increase. It's worth noting at this point that the current budget has, uh, 50,000 a year, um, available. That's from the tannery lot, which ends in three years. Uh, there's a possibility of a grant, which might be about, uh, $150,000, which would take the bill down to 850,000.
And Mark, if I can just add here, Mark, that the grant can go up to 250,000, so 150 is, um, if we were to get the grant, that could be a feasible number. We probably wouldn't get the 250. So we're, we're working with the 150 as a, as a guesstimate, um, if we even got the grant.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. So, um, with a guesstimate of 150, that brings the, the, um, the monthly amount down to 67,000 a year on a 20-year loan. Uh, it's an increase of 17,000 a year over the 50,000 currently believe we have available. That equates to a 0.11 mil increase. The next option, option number two. Uh, I missed this when I reviewed the slides. I don't know how, how we went from option A to option two, but that's okay. Option two is a two-roof design. Basically, uh, the seating would be in one structure, the van shell in another. Uh, the stage is under one roof and, uh, all the seating would be covered and some trees would probably have to be removed. If you look to the right, uh, you can see the additions. The red kind of, um, fanned-out area, kind of in the middle of this stage cover, that would be the van shell, obviously. Um, to the left, there would be some ADA parking spaces, also highlighted in red, some expanded asphalt paving, uh, with a ramp to the stage. And then that green area would cover the bleachers. Uh, you can see it infringes on some of the trees, uh, that would have to probably, uh, be removed. This option, this is an artist rendition. The picture on the left, um, it's just a, to kind of give you an idea, it's a whole, uh, an entirely steel structure, um, This picture is not accurate in that, imagine two of the six posts actually shaved off and just flat across the front. It's the picture they had available. But on the right gives you a little bit better view, the engineering drawings. You can see a front view and then the top view highlighted in green. Kind of the top view gives you an idea. Looks a little bit like the old structure. You can see the curved back. One of the things we actually even talked about was enclosing the back eventually to add some acoustic, better acoustic properties like the similar van shell. It's worth noting, all these structures are to be manufactured out of steel to aid in their longevity as opposed to the wood that rotted. Another view of the possible van shell, again, imagine the front two posts not there and a flat front. That's next slide, slide seven. Slide eight is a rendition of the seating cover, the cover over the seating area. Looks a little bit like a pole barn, but you can see it's about an eight-foot clearance, total height of 16 feet. And that would expand over all the bleachers. Slide nine, the budgetary calculations for this one. You can see we did a little bit more work on this particular option. This is actually the option where we're more leaning towards than the other one. It is a little bit less expensive. Doesn't mean the other one's ruled out, but this is the one we originally looked at. The stretch goal would be option A. Total cost for this one would be 564,000. That's without, and you might say, wait, why does it say 564 on the right, but the bottom number in the yellow is 664? Well, we talked about not including that construction contingency. So at the 564, that brings us back down into the range that we can afford, 44,000 a year with a 20-year loan. Again, a possible grant, assuming it to be 150K, obviously could go up, could go down, might go up to 250 as much. That would mean the borough was on hook for 414K. And you can see the numbers for the different types of loans, 44K, 32K, based on a 15- or 20-year loan. Next slide, the summary comparing the two together. On the left, the Bristol, this is the stretch goal. It is a very beautiful design. I don't think anyone would doubt that. We believe it's the best approach in that it's one roof. Unfortunately, it does cost a lot more. The one on the right, that's the two-cover design. The advantage is all the seating is covered. The stage does look more like an amphitheater. The con is it's a two-roof design, so you have a gap between the two sections. So there's the two side by side, slide 10. And finally, I wanted to throw some notes in. And these are things we want to think about. The former van shell had an enclosed back for storage to aid in acoustics. We may wish to add that as a future enhancement, budget permitting, as I mentioned. Timing. This one, I thought, we talked about and I thought we ought to make sure everyone knew about this. Option one, construction targeted to begin fall of 2023. There's no way we can get it started earlier based on applications for grants and whatnot. Option two, the construction will begin fall of 2022. Obviously, you know, we'll have to do a tent or something in the interim for this year and for next. There's two solutions for the, this season and next season. Rent a tent at about $5,000 a season, or we could purchase a tent. I don't know, Chris, you were able to give any information on the purchase?
I got some tentative information back. They're still waiting to get a price from their supplier, so they're interested in doing that. So I didn't reach out to them, but we didn't get a price yet.
And again, the feeling was, you know, we'd be paying 10,000 over two years. If we can buy a tent for 10,000 or less, it, plus there's another thousand renting the tent just to put it up and take it down. So if we can buy one for less than that $11,000, it would, you know, behoove us and then we'd have it.
The only other thing I wanted to point out, and Tammy, I need your help. What year is the 100th anniversary? Is it 2023?
2023, and we're not going to have, most likely have a new van shell for that. But I figure it could be part of the enthusiasm of looking forward to that and could be part of the fundraising towards that goal. So we can really make it work for us in a different way.
Agreed. There is a chance.
Yeah.
There's a chance option two might be ready. There's no chance option one would be ready.
Yeah, if I can weigh in, Mark, that's correct. The, most of that is all dictated by the grants. Option one, we won't be able to submit grants because we're not prepared until later. Option two, where we have the ducks in a row that we could submit the grant now, which then gets your timing to a potential for a stage covered for 2023.
And to me, that's, I mean, that's not the determining factor, you know. Like I said, we can have renderings, we could create a lot of hype for the upcoming new van shell. I mean, you know, we can work around that. It's not going to ruin our celebration whatsoever, but so if I can comment, I mean, ideally, I mean, we had a beautiful van shell. It was an icon in our community and in our park and it had nice sound. Didn't do everything we wanted it to do. We couldn't cover the seats with the structure the way it was. And so there, you know, there were some issues, but overall, it was a beautiful van shell. And we're looking at this next van shell, which is going to be made out of steel, so I expect it's going to be there 40, 50, maybe more years into the future because we don't have the wood issue. So we looked at it from two perspectives. And the reason we're showing you option A is, you know, as a legacy, looking 50 years down the road, that is a van shell that would continue to be an icon, would really, I mean, it's a beautiful structure. However, is it worth going into that sort of debt? You know, if you priced it out over the 40, 50 years that it would be standing, it's, you know. So we talked about it from all sides. The second option is more affordable and perhaps more appropriate for the borough for that reason. Not quite as exciting, but would probably do a nice job. So you can see where we're between, we were between the two scenarios. It's a matter of, you know, looking down the road and what do we want to lead to the future generations? But from a price standpoint, option two certainly speaks for itself. So we really wanted to hear your comments on how you felt and what we want the park to go. Pete, are you trying to talk?
Uh, no.
Oh, okay. Your thing lit up. I thought you were.
I mean, my brain was trying to talk, but my mouth didn't talk.
Okay.
So Tammy, and looking at the pictures, I mean, just from my perspective of this, the option two, the van shell cover portion, looks in my mind a little bit, it kind of has a little nostalgia feel, kind of like a a music man kind of a look.
It does.
We can optimize on that, maybe even putting like a weather vane on top or something else to really give it that kind of nostalgic feel perhaps. And then maybe that will make it jazzy enough or a little more jazzy so that it looked, you know, that it has that vibe to it, which would be nice in our park. Certainly, the other one would be amazing. But as we've discussed, it's a huge cost. And even though we'll be coming up on the closure of the parking lot loan shortly, which really, so how much would this be? So it'd be really under 20,000 additional dollars a year than what we're spending now. Because our budget currently takes into consideration that we're spending, aren't we spending 50? So 17, it's a difference really of 17,000 moving forward because we've been paying the loan for the parking up to now.
And is that what we want to spend our money on when there's, you know, lots of other things that we could be addressing? So, you know, there's both sides of the coin.
Well, I think the other opportunity was, and we had talked about this, and I think some members of the committee did as well, that if we pick a design, whether it's one or two, with covering over the seating, it really does increase our opportunity to use the park in different ways than we had before. Because anybody who's gone to a concert in the park knows that people park, sit, nobody sits in those seats. They all sit way, way back under the trees to get some shade. So that has sorely been missed in our park for a long time. So that opportunity to be able to have a covered area, to have other functions there, all different ideas that we might be able to utilize the park differently than we have before.
And the area under the seats, I believe, is 16 feet tall. Is that what it is? So if people still want to sit back, they'll still be able to see the van shell. So we took that into consideration.
The nice thing is that, you know, both serve the purpose.
Yes.
One is utilitarian. And being a Penn Stater, of course, I like utilitarian. If anyone's ever seen Beaver Stadium. The other one is beautiful and I like beautiful too. So unfortunately, it comes down to dollars and cents, I think, and we have to, that's our decision to make, correct, as a, as a whole team?
So I guess as a committee, you could say that we're leaning towards option two because of monetary issues.
So the reason that we're covering the seats is for shade, is that?
That was one of the biggest complaints, Pete, that the public has is, you know, they burn their fannies when there's sun out or, you know, when it's been sitting out in the sun all day. I don't know if the seats are particularly comfortable anyway, but that's a different issue. But at least with those metal seats, if we had covering, then they're not going to burn their behinds.
So that's how the covering came about, was because of
Yes.
sun. I really wasn't aware of that. I didn't know what it was.
Can I ask some questions?
Shoot away. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm just curious, I mean, we're used to the van shell having the back covering. Is there any thought, since this would not have the back covering, there would be to say some kind of arbovita or shrubs to put some kind of block barrier from people, you know, people that are driving that road to go to the parking lot during events? Even just the traffic on Arch and Maple Street? Is it like a little bit of a sound barrier?
So if I can go in during the committee meeting and during my meetings with the the engineers, the DCNR will require additional greenery to be put in the in the area. And the committee did talk about, and I forgot to to notice it on the PowerPoint as well, or put it on the PowerPoint, that the, there would be a proposal of putting arbovitas in the back. A little history, historically, when that original van shell went up, there was no back to it. The Lions Club and other donors paid for the roof. And then later, the van shell was added. And as a matter of fact, there were arbovitas there in the beginning. So I guess we're going back to the future. I don't know. But so that is part of the proposal for covering so that people on Arch Street aren't looking right in as well as, so there is a backdrop of the for anybody who's performing on there, you're not looking through it.
Okay. And then I guess I, right now I'm thinking one other thing. With the storage that was in the previous van shell, the multiple holding chairs that were there for different events. But I'm also thinking possibly entertainment may have used that area as a changing room, so to speak. Which I realize we're not building something just to have a few changing rooms. But I was just wondering if the storage for the chairs was taken into consideration.
So again, I can interject. Their last meeting council approved a shed for the electric, which happens to be in a eight by 10, which could be used for that type of thing. The storage of the chairs temporarily is not a high priority. We, the team will still continue to look, I would think, on options. But the number of times that that many chairs was used was very minimal.
Okay. All I could think of at the moment. Thanks.
I think previously, we had a different, how many years we've talked, different times at council meetings about trying to price and see if we could get some shade material, you know, some sails to put up or something to shade that area. And I think the price was prohibitive to do that just in and of itself. But since we're now faced with a situation where the van shell had to come down and a new one needs to go up, it opened the door for more discussion on the same front. Because that is a continuing complaint. I know it's been a complaint when I posted the events in the summer, that either people can't sit in the seats because it's hot or sunny, or when they sit farther away under the trees, the acoustics are not as good for them to be able to enjoy the the entertainment. So this is a way to solve those two issues together.
I mean, trees are going to be removed.
I already know it's three, right?
Yeah, two or three, depending on how the build goes, but we're going to then plant other trees in their place.
Thanks.
Sorry, another question. The seating, the roof over the seating, does that just cover the existing seating or is it going back through the grass area further?
I believe it's going to go back a little bit further and we're adding two six-by-four concrete pads for ADA accessible and companion seating.
Okay.
That's a proposal. And that's for option two, right?
Right. Yes. I think we'd be proud of either of these options being the legacy that we leave for for future Fleetwood events in the park. And like Mark said, they both are functional. You know. So it seems like people are leaning towards the option two. Is that a fair statement?
That's what it sounds like to me, Tammy. Do we need to make any determination at this point to move forward on one of the proposals so that we can get the grant application in order?
This is Chris. Yes. If council's leaning on option two, there's a resolution that was in the packet that you would authorize to start with the DCNR grant proposal. If council's leaning on option one, then there would be no action. The action would be sending the committee and our engineers to get more detailed information for grant for the higher, for the increased cost.
My opinion is we can't afford the million-dollar job, but you know, we're spending money like drunken sailors. But my opinion is the, is the option two.
Do we need a motion on that? If we're going to go with option two, do we need to take a vote on that, Andy?
Yes, we would need a motion on that. And then there would also be a motion for the resolution that and for those that don't know, it's, DCNR is the Pennsylvania that, and for those that don't know, it's, DCNR is the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. That's obviously the agency that administers this type of grant, because in addition to maintaining the state forests and parks, they also work with communities to do local rec things. So this resolution would be directed toward the grant, which would authorize preparation and then submission of the grant would allow Suzanne to sign it electronically, which is what they do now. So, and this is a DCNR-produced resolution is what they're looking for. And what they require.
Does anybody want to make that motion to accept option two? And then we'll take a second motion to accept the new proposal, DCNR?
I couldn't hear that.
I'm sorry. So I need to move, if we're going to go forward, if we need to, if we're going to be moving forward on this project now, based on the the DCNR grant, I'll need a motion for as to accept proposal option two. And so the second portion to accept the resolution for DCNR to fund it, or fund a portion of it. Or do I have a motion by anybody to accept option two?
Ralph, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Mark, also.
Okay, I've got a motion.
The engineers have taken an initial look at it, and they believe will be okay. We might need additional permit, but they don't think that this is going to be an issue. Because it was, part of it is replacing existing structure. For the engineering part.
Obviously, we're going to have to pay for this if we're moving forward with it. The first leg of this will be, yes, Colin, we would be, if we, if we can get the DCNR grant, and we can move forward with this proposal, we would have to fund it, and that funding would have to come at some point in the terms of a loan, like we've taken out existing loans before. Yes.
But it's less than the fifty thousand we're paying now, and that ends. I think they're going to fit together pretty well. Is that right, Chris?
Pretty much. There might be, there might be one year of overlap of both loans.
As one ends, then we pick up the other one, but it's actually less than what we're paying.
Correct. Loan is going to expire. Colin, did you have another question? I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
Part of our discussion is, is that we do want to go to these other groups. We want to try to get in and determine if we can get grant money or not, and then we do want to go to these other groups. Hey, if we could find a wealthy benefactor, that would be awesome, then we could do whatever we want. But we certainly, we got some money from Breakfast Brothers. We still need to approach the other organizations that you mentioned and any private benefactors, and we also need to do some fundraising. So I think that's all part of it. We, we would really like to have a group, kind of like Friends of the Fleetwood Playground, who put all the playground equipment in. If we could have Friends of the Fleetwood Park, I mean, there's lots of things we can do. But we first have to decide what the design is going to be and get the application in for the grant, just to really find out what the bottom dollar is going to be if we get that grant money. And meanwhile, we need to be soliciting these other groups and individuals. Does that answer it, Colin? So I think that's all part of it. You're welcome.
Yeah, for everyone's additional information, DCNR is very encouraging for other donors. So what the Borough would be doing is signing up for the match. Or this maximum amount. And then if, you know, Amazon comes in and says, hey, we really like Fleetwood, we want to give you half of the Borough, it would just reduce our portion. Nothing would change on the grant.
Yeah, East Penn Manufacturing would be a good one. Sun Suite would be somebody we can approach. So, you know, we're not going to stop doing those things. But we first need to have a design.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We've had some discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, then, Dorian, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll for people to vote on the acceptance of option number two for the new band shelf, please.
Okay. Suzanne Tuck?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yes.
Colin Boyer? John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that motion carries then. Then we have to move on and have another, a second motion, please, to go forward and accept the resolution for the DCNR grant. So can I have, does someone want to make that motion, please?
Hey, Suzanne, may I, may I add to that? That based upon the signature, if DCNR allows someone else to sign, that we change this resolution page to indicate a different signer. So, meaning the president, or if you want me to sign for you, because that might be easier during a closing, that that could be included in the motion.
That's fine. For me to sign it or for my designate is fine. Right, for Chris. So, but I still don't have that motion, so I need someone. Okay, so I've got the, I've got a motion by Mr. Touch to accept the resolution for the DCNR grant, or option number two for the band shelf. Do I have a second, please?
This is Jim, I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, then, Dorian, you'd call the roll, please.
Okay. Suzanne Tuck?
Yes.
Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Jim Meals?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yes.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
Okay, that's everyone.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, then that motion for resolution for the DCNR grant is accepted. Okay, moving along, we've got a rec board proposal from, that I believe Karen Crossley is going to present. I don't know, Chris, you're going to start it, and then Chris, Karen's going to take it from there?
No, the only I'll add is that the rec board proposal was also sent to all council over the weekend. Karen, it's all yours.
Okay. Hi, everyone. I believe all of you know me. If not, I'm Karen Crossley. I am the president of Fleetwood Rec Board. I'm here today to talk about the proposal that we have. It's the rec board's desire to breathe new life into the the park that's seldom used at the triangle of Fleetwood Avenue Beach Streets, as you enter Fleetwood. We just like to, we feel that incorporating groups like the Historical Society and the Legion and local scout packs would really make this a great community project. Plus, it would benefit our military personnel. So our clock tower donation, we feel would be the cornerstone of beginning this project. And like Chris said, you've all been sent the proposal, so if you want, we can go through that. So again, the purpose of this proposal is for the repurposing of the small triangle at Fleetwood Avenue Beach Streets. It's the small park where the Fleetwood sign currently is. So our, our whole purpose for doing this is to honor our current and previous military personnel. And we have reached out to the Historical Society and the Legion, and both groups are very interested in the concept of this project. So phase one, we're, we're looking to create an anchor for the park to grow around. And the clock tower fits the bill. So it would be funded by the rec board. And our, our thought on this was that we would dedicate it to the military personnel from Fleetwood, and the gift would be in honor of the Borough's hundred and fifty anniversary, one hundred and fiftieth anniversary in 2023. So this would be no cost to the Borough. We are using rec board funds. And on page two is the specs of the clock that we are, have all agreed upon. And then on page three, this is our conceptual design of the layout of the park that we feel, you know, it's just an idea, you know, it's, this is, we'll be taking input from other groups as well. To, you know, like local scouts who would do things around the park, things like that. Are there any questions so far?
Well, I, I, I have a question or a comment. I've been wanting a clock tower forever, so I'm thrilled. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I mentioned an email earlier, and I'm sure you all got it, and thought what a pain in the butt I am, but I'm concerned about the location, that it won't be visible enough. I mean, I really think this needs to be a real focal point. And unless we take down the trees, I don't know how it would be. I was wondering if that we have a plan on how it will be visible to, to people driving by, and they can actually see it and appreciate it. I mean, I know it'll be visible for the people that go to that park, but quite frankly, not many people go to that little park. So I would think it would want to be something you see as you, as you drive by, and you can see what time it is, and oh, what a beautiful clock tower. So that was my concern. I mean, I personally, I suggest that we accept it, you know, graciously, and I'm excited about it, but I just have a little concern about that location not being as visible as I think this clock deserves.
Sure. Well, it was something that we discussed, and we all agreed that that, that particular location, it's an entry point into Fleetwood. And again, it's a spot that's seldom used, that we would like to kind of breathe new life into. And this, this is the whole premise around this, is what can we do with this park? And since there was already, it's already a designated, you know, military, there's already a granite memorial there. We felt that really pushing that and involving the other community, you know, groups would really facilitate that better. And, you know, so we, our, our thought on the clock tower was it would be a great, just a focal point entering Fleetwood.
And how, but how would you are you thinking about taking the trees down? There's a lot of
Can I, can I interject?
Yes.
Or interject here?
Absolutely.
Okay, it's my craft. I know when we had initially talked about doing this, that was one of our first concerns as well, especially when you're driving by. However, this would also be more of a walkable location, and that's what we're hoping to get, to get people to come in and see and pay respects and gather for things, not just like Memorial Day, but throughout the whole year. So I think, if you think of it as just a driving by location, as a welcome to Fleetwood, then I can kind of see your concerns about the visibility, but I still think you'll be able to see it very well, because it won't be the same height as the tops of the trees. But we're also, we want to create something with a little more walkability to it.
Then perhaps instead of, I know right now it's just a rendition, but maybe instead of having it in the center of that little park, it's closer to the edge of the park where people driving by could enjoy it as much as people walking in that little park could enjoy it. So perhaps not in the center, perhaps, you know, in a little bit more visible location. That's all. I, I'm not, I'm not arguing with the, with the concept. I just, I just want to make sure it gets seen, because it's going to be beautiful.
Sure. Well, absolutely. But again, the whole premise of this is the actual park itself. That was our whole thought. But the tower, the clock tower, this whole design is actually, it's just like, like it says on there, it's just conceptual. So, you know, we're just talking about this right now, and we're here for approval and that's, that's our thought.
Another thing you think about for long term is there is electric that is run to that tiny little plot there. We would be able to put in like some uplighting to the clock as well.
Oh, nice, nice. Well, I think it's a beautiful gift, and I, I thank you again, and I just, you know, please consider the location of it so it can be enjoyed by the greatest number of people. But thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Karen Oden and Chris, and I don't remember if this discussion, I don't remember, maybe we can have it lifted up. I can see in the photograph that we've got that one tower that there is sort of up on a little bit of a platform. Is there a way that it can be raised a little bit to allow it to be seen, or, you know? Is that an opportunity for us, maybe?
It can be. The overall height is sixteen feet tall already, so that's pretty tall. But you could take it higher if needed. One of the things that I happen to be, I took a very long walk yesterday down to there, and the other, the other position might be looking at at the corner where that granite memorial is right now. It's, it's actually granite memorial sounds like it's much, it's bigger than it really is. It's more like a two foot by three foot plaque that's in there. And I'm not, I keep not taking away from it, but don't, don't think of it as a sixteen foot granite type thing. It would go, the clock tower would actually go very nicely even right there, and, which is at the at the corner of Snyder-Snoco, I'm sorry, the pick and place right now in that corner, which could also be much more visible to traffic. And the conceptual view of that was just that, it's just some type of military, there's, it would be up to the, the future groups of how they might want to develop it. So yes, the, the clock is strictly anywhere along, along Fleetwood Avenue, basically, is an option.
I, thank you, Chris. That, that's kind of what I was thinking, and it would be so nice that, like you said, that little granite, which an Eagle Scout did, and he, he did a nice job, and then the clock, and then I can see the flag bells in kind of a half circle with all the different military branches. You know, I, I think you could really do something nice there, and it would be more visible. So thanks for suggesting that, and thanks for looking at it. But, but a beautiful gift.
So this is John. I just want to weigh in on a concern about the amount of traffic that goes past on that, that corner. We've had a number of incidents in front of the store there with tractor trailers and cars meeting, and my concern with putting it out that corner is you know, that we could potentially have an impact from, literally an impact from a vehicle in that corner. I don't recall any being there, like up in that section specifically in, that I can remember, Chris. I don't know if you remember.
I was, I was rocking my brain as well. There is, and I know of nothing in the last ten years that ended up anywhere close to that. Snyder-Snoco in the last ten years is most likely even ten, but that's, that's at that bad turn on the other direction. So I think it's I think it's relatively okay. Uh, plus of course it'd be, it would, would be insured. I mean, it's not, that's not to say that we should put it in a bad location, but.
Okay.
Do we need to, do we, do we need a motion on this?
Well, something that we do because we have to, um, then the rec board will go forward and make their plans to purchase. And um, I think there also has to be some, you know, some paperwork and some installation comfor- you know, confirmation. So we would need a motion to accept the um the new clock for, the new clock tower and the placements somewhere within this park, which will ultimately, I think the plan is going to be to make it a more military, another tribute, military tribute area with uplighting and flags representing all of the armed services.
This is John. I'd, I'd like to make that motion.
That's fine.
Sorry, there's a lot of background here and I think it's my phone. Um, I'd like to make a motion for, to accept their proposal. Um, and to allow them to move forward and purchase the, the clock.
Wonderful. Do I have a second to that motion, please?
This is John. I'll second it.
Perfect. Um, so then Doreen, if there's no further, uh, any further discussion on this at this point? Sure, Colin, go ahead. Okay. I think it's a good idea. We have a lot of people who give a lot of their time and energy to our community. I think it'd be a really great opportunity to, to highlight all of their um selfless acts that they do for our community. That's a great idea. We'll definitely keep that in mind. And, and again, this particular park is going to be uh planned and changed as new rec boards come in, new borough members come on, new community groups want to become involved. This will be an evolving area with this recommendation to give it this cornerstone and then move from there. That's a great idea. Any further discussion? All right, we've got a motion and a second. If Doreen, you wouldn't mind calling the roll, we'll get on to the vote.
Okay, Suzanne Touch.
I have to abstain as I'm on the record, so I will abstain from this vote.
Okay, Pete Merkel.
Pete, are you on mute?
I'm sorry. Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, Jim Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yes.
Colin Boyer. And John Rothenberger.
Yes, I'm sorry, Pete, I put you on mute when that train went by.
Oh, was it you?
Sorry about that.
No problem. Well, that motion carried. Um, thank you, Karen and Meg for joining us today and um on behalf of the rec board, I know that we've worked very hard to pull money together for this, and I just think this is going to be such a great um addition to our town. So Karen, do you have anything closing you want to say?
Nope, just thank you very much.
Wonderful. Excellent. All right. Moving forward, then we're going to go on to the Tannery Parking Committee.
Let it be me. I'm not the committee. Uh, Ralph, John, Chris and I got together uh a couple of weeks ago. Uh, everybody knows where we are with the parking lot right now. There's a hundred and eighty-three spaces in the main lot plus the slant parking on the alley. For um, the main lot, there's no restriction, well, there are some restrictions, but there's no charges right now. Chris sent everyone uh the long version of our meeting. I'll give you the short version. What we'd like to do is charge uh for people or entities that, that need the spaces for, like, for example, a code issue. The Grand Central, for example, needs five spaces of dedicated parking to open their new uh addition to their restaurant. Things like that. Also, if a landlord would choose to purchase a, a uh parking space, it'd be a lease, a lease, not a purchase. Um, they would get a dedicated space. It would have a sign on the space with their name. And they'd be charged twenty bucks a month uh for the space. And you can read Chris's explanation. It's quite lengthy. But the bottom, bottom line is if you need a space for a code issue, you can lease a space from the borough. It's not going to be free. The borough is not going to enforce uh these, these uh dedicated spaces. If someone's parking in your dedicated space, you will have to deal with that on your own, call the police or whatever. Uh, for the borough to try to enforce this is that, that would be a monumental job. So what we did is we took a drawing, we numbered the spaces. And if, here again, if the Grand Central wants five spaces, they can choose the spaces. They'll get the number, the numbers they chose. We will make the signs for them. Uh, I believe it's a hundred bucks per sign. And uh, they will have, then have dedicated spaces.
That would be at their cost, Pete.
Correct. They would pay the, for the sign and they would pay twenty bucks a month for the space. Now you can read Chris's uh explanation. We're not going to charge for the first year. Um, you know, no more than five percent increases as years go by. But that, that's the basics. It's not going to be for free. Um, and Ralph had some good explanations as to why it shouldn't be free. And I agree with that. So that's the story. I don't know if we need to vote on this or whatever.
Yeah, we would have to vote on a proposal to start um having permit parking at the Tannery Lot, which really was the idea way back when, when we decided to take over the ownership and maintenance of that area.
Yes, it was.
So long ago, Pete, right? You and I, I mean, we, all of us have been on council so long. These are things, it's amazing to me how long it things take to get to fruition sometimes.
I could write a book, I could write a book on the Tannery Lot and I'm not kidding. And you should.
I, I'm, I'm sure you could. I'm sure this, Pete, you are certainly a historian. There's no doubt about that. Um, but I, that was the original idea, as I recall it, for the Tannery Lot, but we decided to take it over because there was a cost associated with it. And we were going to be using the permit parking uh to offset the cost to revitalize it.
Well, apparently there's some pushback. Um, here again, from Home, uh Homer's or whatever, whatever the name of that bar is. Uh, they think that it, everything should be, be for free, but yes, that was our idea in the beginning. And like I say, Ralph had some good rationale. We, we can't do this for free for, for those instances where they, where they need it in order to operate their facility.
So as a side note to that, the angled parking next on the alley would remain as a two hour parking, two hour only parking, non-permitted. Um, so it's not included in that hundred and eighty-three spaces that uh that Pete was just mentioning.
But that's my understanding. All right. Everybody on the committee? Does anybody have any questions for anybody in the committee that they want to ask?
I, 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 that, that, that's a question out of the blue. I have, we never discussed that. I believe we're, those spaces are free at the moment, but
I think during the committee meeting, uh, the committee agreed that this was for the Tannery Lot and other lots would be discussed separately. Is that true, Ralph?
Yes, that's correct. We were going to come back to those. We're rushing this one because we have.
Um, the, the.
Grand Central, because Grand Central needs an answer quickly.
Yes, that, that's right. This is for the Tannery Lot, what we're talking about.
Tannery Lot only at this time. And then the plan is you're going to revisit the other municipal lots as to how you're going to manage those.
Yes, we talked about, why do we have all this feedback? I have no, does anybody know?
No, I'm trying to find the, the culprit. I don't see it right now.
You know, we talked about the small lot in fact, the Watkins Architect, and the more we talked, the more complicated it got. So this is, right now, this is just the Tannery Lot.
Okay. Do we have any other, Colin, did you have any other questions or did that answer your question? Okay, so.
So I, I think just to, just to clarify that or to re- reemphasize what Pete was saying was that um, what we talked about was not charging for next year because of the COVID situation, that, that would be delayed for at least a year. Yes. Yes, correct.
And I think the, the one mouse, the one issue that we had been hiccuping against was the o- oversight of it. And if we're not picking up that cost in terms of getting a, you know, meter made or something or anything, then that certainly helps move this project forward much quicker.
Yes. I mean, we can visit that down the road. We can visit different scenarios down the road, but right now this is the simplest um and quickest way to do it.
Right, okay. So then do I have a motion then to go forward with the parking permit promote, proposal for the Tannery Parking Lot proposed by the committee?
I, can I make a motion on that?
You certainly can, Mr. Merkel.
John will make the second.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
And I've got a second. If uh, there's no, is there any further discussion at this point? Okay, Doreen, take one second.
I just want to make sure I understand it. So um there's only going to be charged for the people, the permit parking, for example, for for the bar or whatever. Everybody else, if somebody else goes in there, they're not going to be charged or they, they don't have to get a permit, correct?
As of today, correct. This is correct. We got the dedicated spaces today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then. Then uh, Doreen, would you mind taking the vote, please?
Okay, Suzanne Touch, agree. Pete Merkel.
Yes.
Meals.
Yes.
Mark Watkins.
Yes.
Ralph Touch.
Yes.
Colin Boyer. And John Rothenberger.
Yep.
And that's everyone.
Perfect. That cap, that carries then. All right. Moving forward then, we've got the uh manager's report. Chris, can you take it?
Yeah, and I'll try to keep this uh brief. The bridge update um on, on the agenda is strictly that we're, we're progressing. I met with uh, the, the architect on that, uh, looking at the potential of the different scenarios. Um, the, the first flying ointment is the soil right next to the creek may not be as rigid as we hoped. I'm using the, I'm sure I'm using the wrong word. But um, the, there, there was, have to be some studies done to see how, how long the bridge might have to be in order to obtain the better soil to put the abutments in. Um, so it's, it's just looking at this point, but it's just an update. Uh, and the other update is the likelihood of us getting it for uh May-June timeframe is out the window only because all the bridge manufacturers are fourteen weeks plus once the order is placed. Um, the raw materials are a real bear right now, so I don't, I don't see any uh, a lot of hope by getting them by Memorial Day. If there's no questions on that, uh, the ban shell, actually, I think we covered everything during the uh Mark's presentation. Um, the, the tent is, is on uh, as of tonight, will be on order. Um, and the uh, for, for the rental, and we're still trying to get a price, we'll determine the best uh, best way forward there. And the, the shed has been ordered. Uh, that is due in about two or three weeks. Uh, and again, the, 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 the shed is not just for storage. All the whole electrical system will be in there. All the outlets will be attached to the shed so that any band or group performing uh will have the same electric that it had in the old ban shell. So uh, any questions on bridge or ban shell? Okay, Berks County Recycling Sponsor, everybody got a uh form in the mail. This, this we have not done in the past, and that's why I'm bringing it up to council at this point. If we do it and it's uh, we want to do it uh repeatedly, uh, we'll just do it like we do some of the other donations that we do. Berks, Berks County Recycling, uh Craig actually reached out. They, they sent us back a um, what, what this is for, and it basically helps the county on their recycling effort. Uh, they had some stats, and I don't have the email handy, of uh how many Fleetwood residents use certain parts of it. Berks County sponsors the hazardous materials uh donation once or twice a year. They sponsor the electronics recycling, um, et cetera, et cetera. So their request was for a donation from each municipality.
Chris, this is Craig. If I remember correctly, I think the stats on just the uh electric recycling uh program, there was fifty plus Fleetwood residents that utilized that service and that was a free service to them. And the borough and uh the fire company have utilized their free services in the past as well.
Chris, have we uh had the, I don't remember, I apologize. Have we been a Berks County recycling sponsor before?
Cap looked in the records and we, we may have done it back in eighteen, but we haven't. It was, it was sporadic. So uh, as you saw in the form, they're asking for um five hundred up to whatever we want to give. Um, and I, I take this kind of, I think as we did with the uh Berks County District Attorneys, they asked for money for the crime watch. So the same type of thing, if, if council wishes to continue to support this, we wouldn't have to go through this every year. We'll, we'll budget it going forward.
Anybody on the team have some thoughts on that? I mean, it seemed to me, generally speaking, it's always a good opportunity for people to recycle, certainly electronics. We don't want things ending up, they shouldn't be in landfills. Um, I know that, you know, I mean, I, I know that I've utilized these services before, uh, and it's very helpful to be able to take your items uh to a designated location. I know that I've utilized these services before, uh, and it's very helpful to be able to take your items to a designated location.
This is John, I'm going to echo what Suzanne said. I've used the service a number of times in the past with both electronic items, as well as dehumidifiers and things like that, that are free to drop off, and, um, I, I appreciate that service being there.
Would anybody be adverse, or would we be able to make a donation of $500? Or does someone think another number is more appropriate?
500 sounds. 500 sounds good.
Okay, then, can, I think we need to make a, don't we need to make a motion so that we can make this an annual, an annual bill? Again, a, a service for our community and for $500, even if you split that over our number of residents, it's pennies. So, um, does someone want to make that motion so that we can afford, that we can, um, budget and pay this year $500 for the Berks County Recycling sponsorship?
John will make that motion.
John makes that motion. Do I have a second, please?
Mark, second.
Thank you, Mark, I appreciate that. Um, so we've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind taking the roll, please. Okay, Suzanne Touch? Agreed, yes. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Yamil's?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yep.
And that's everyone. Thank you, everyone, that motion carries.
And to confirm, I'm sorry, that was 500, right?
That was 500, and it'll be an annual, um, so if you could just take care of that, to remind us when the budget comes out.
Well, it'll be, uh, just to follow up on that, it'll be in every, it'll be in the budget then annually, so every September, October, when we're reviewing it, you'll see it. Then you'll have the opportunity to scratch it if at that point you don't wish to maintain it.
Perfect, thank you so much.
You bet. I'm sorry, what?
Moving on, go ahead.
Yeah, moving on, yes. Penn Vest update, at the end of the month, we're going, we're closing on the water loan for the, uh, for the water project throughout Fleetwood. Nothing new there, but, um, the, one of the documents said Borough Council and/or Borough Manager to sign at closing. Uh, I just want to affirm, uh, and we can do it, I don't know, Andy, by motion or just by, um, acknowledgement, that, uh, you're the only person right now to sign would be me. And if anybody else needs or would like to sign, they would have to be available for the closing, which is March 31st at like 10 o'clock in the morning?
Yeah, I don't think we need a separate vote, Chris, as long as that, that was approved, I think it was approved last month, right?
It was, it just, when I was reviewing the documentation, they wanted to make sure that, um, I was the authorized signer, I'm not sure if I was. So I, I just want to throw it out, just to make sure that if anybody else wants to, great, but then we'll, we'll, we'll send you to the, uh, the meeting as well.
Chris, I think that probably a good idea for you to be noted as the appropriate signer, so if we need to make a motion today, just to clarify that, we can do that.
Yeah, I think we should, if there's any sort of question, then, yeah, we definitely should make a motion.
Can someone make that motion to confirm that, um, Chris is going to be the, uh, the signer for the Penn Vest update? So I have a motion by Mr. Touch, do I have a second, please?
It's Pete, I'll second it.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, then, Doreen, Doreen, I'm going to prevail upon, upon you to go through the roll again, please. Okay, I just have one question, was it Pete who did the second?
Yes.
Okay. Right, roll call is Doreen Touch? Yes. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Yamil's?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? Okay, and John Rothenberger?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion then carries, let's take that, that, uh, housework is, uh, is housekeeping is taken.
Perfect, thank you. And, uh, a note on the audits, we went through both the financial and the police, actually, the pension audit. Pension audit happens once every few years, the, the financial audit, of course, happens every year. Uh, we went both of, we went through both of them, and the initial was no findings. We'll get the formal reports on both of them later. Actually, the financial comes out in April, I'm not sure about the pension report, uh, but of course, council will be notified of it. But I, I must say that, uh, the office staff had been phenomenal going through this, I mean, there's a lot going on right now, of course. Um, and then the pension audit kind of threw us into a loop because it was virtual uh, in the beginning, and Cap went through quite a bit to try to get the documentation to, uh, the pension people. So just an FYI, it's, um, it, it's been an active time, but everybody has risen to the occasion and did a very nice job. And the fact that we continue to go through these audits, uh, mocking on wood, um, pretty much unscathed, is a good testament to, uh, what the borough has set up.
Good job.
That's it, that's all I got.
Yeah, thank, thanks to the group for putting that together and, and working with those guys to get it done.
Okay. Okay, then I think we can move on to Craig Conrad with the public works report, please.
Hey, good evening, everyone, I'll keep it really brief here as well. Under my report, uh, just a few things to know, we have a pre-construction meeting held on March 15th for the Penn Vest Waterline Replacement Project with Amrex Corporation. Um, work should begin, uh, beginning to mid-April. At, at that pre-construction meeting, we'll get a better handle on, uh, a schedule of events and what streets are going to tackle at what time and, uh, how we're going to go about completing these projects, so, you know, stay tuned for that. Um, on the waste water side, we're going to be televising and flushing Zone 1 beginning on March 22nd. It'll take about four days to complete, that's down in, uh, the Forest Street, Spring Street, Brookfield, uh, Friendship Drive area, so you might see some crews out there doing some work. Um, that's what they'll be doing. Uh, I'm currently working on getting our paving work set up for the summer and all scheduled. I will send out a list of streets, I'll work with Jim on that and, uh, update you guys on what we're planning to do. We're planning on starting sweep, street sweeping on March 15th, we're banking like the snow's going to melt this week. If it doesn't get warmer than it did today, we might not, uh, stay on that schedule, but I think there's some areas we can begin sweeping. Uh, stormwater, I have two cat's basins at the intersection of West Spring and Forest that are falling in, they're old brick, they were made out of bricks way back when, and the bricks are failing, the mortar joints are failing. Um, I have Desco come out and take a look at those, we're going to rebuild them with concrete structures, probably, um, that's getting scheduled right now, so I'm not sure when it'll happen, but it shouldn't be too long from now. Um, again, with, uh, I'll reiterate on what the chief said. I had met with Telco and PennDOT several weeks ago out at the new traffic signal at the railroad. We actually walked, um, all the traffic lights down to Franklin Street, opened up all the control boxes, we went through the program, uh, word for word with PennDOT's programming, and there were some things that were, were programmed wrong, and, uh, Adam Stettler from PennDOT felt that that could have been causing some of our issues. Since that change was made, and we also put in, uh, some timing programs for when the deck of traffic leaves out, and I think since that change has been made, everything seems to be working status quo, as it should, I have not had any uh, concerns or complaints since we made those corrections, so I, it looks to me like things are working as they should have in the beginning, so I think we have that worked out. In reference to, uh, what Mr. Schucker's mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, um, this is not at council level yet, it's at committee level, we had some talks with SunSuite on the possible discussions, on possible, uh, extra discharge to the treatment plant, but it's very premature at this point. The Sewer and Water Committee has talked about it briefly, but we're waiting for those talks to progress before it comes to council level. And I think that's all I have, unless someone has some questions for me.
Craig, this is Detton. It, I understand what you're saying, it's extremely preliminary, but I was just wondering if there was any number of the fresh water supply that SunSuite is looking to increase?
They're actually not looking at increasing water on Detton, they only have two full vines in there that can run, which they are currently running, um, right now. The discharge is what they're looking at, they're hauling a lot of stuff out. So what this would do, it wouldn't change, it wouldn't change what they're using, it would just change what they're hauling out.
Craig, this is John, I got, uh, two things, one is the traffic light. Um, I, I had some concerns from people from a few weeks ago. Um, and just to back up what you were saying, I have not heard any concerns within the past week or two. Um, everything seems to be going pretty well. Um, so that was one item, and the second is the, uh, the, the water main replacements. Um, have we had much feedback from residents on the service line, um, replacement issue?
That's a good question, John, yeah, we, we delivered all those letters by hand, um, just because it was faster than trying to send them all out, but, uh, yes, I have had several calls. Um, people are, are really, uh, really actually, um, happy to, that this is happening, and, uh, from what I'm understanding, in, on, uh, at least, at least the Washington Street area, there's some several lead services there that are going to be changed out, and people are, are, seem to be more than willing to, to do it. I've had several talks with quite a few people, and all have been positive.
Okay, thank you, that's good to hear.
You're welcome.
Anybody have anything else for Craig? Okay, thank you, Craig.
Yeah, I, I, I had budgeted, you know, in the past, we had budgeted, I think when I first started here, it was over 30,000, I think we lowered it to 26, and last year, we lowered it, I believe, I don't have my budget sheet in front of me, Colin, so I'm going off of memory here. So I think we budgeted 13,000, I did end up spending 17, so I was slightly over, I tried to watch that every day, the best that I could, and I cut the contractors off when I felt I was at, uh, at my budget point, I did miss it by a little bit, but, um, we went over slightly, but we had 26 inches of snow, so I was very, um, very aware of that budget, and I tried to do my best to stay within those means. Thank you, I, you know, we could have hauled a little more out, but, you know, I, I was trying to be budget conscious and also realistic that, you know, in the next several weeks after the storm, that the snow would be going away on its own, and, you know, when it melts from the sunshine, that doesn't cost us any money, so it was worth the wait, and, uh, I, I'm not unhappy with how we handled it, and I'm glad to hear that you're, you're not as well, so thank you.
Wonderful, thank you, Colin, that was a nice compliment, and I've heard nice things, Craig, from a lot of people who were grateful of the hard work that you guys put in and the many, many hours with that incredible snowstorm, so. Uh, and I, it looks like Mother Nature's going to be on our side this week, and it's going to melt that, that snow this week, so.
We sure hope so. But thank you, everyone.
Uh, you did a great job. Um, so, anybody have anything else for Craig, or is he, are we good? Okay, then if, uh, we can move forward to Mr. Rothenberger about the bills, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills for March 5th.
Do I have a second, please?
This is Ralph, I'll second it.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second, do we have any further discussion? Okay, then, Doreen, if you wouldn't mind calling the roll? Okay, Suzanne Touch? Agreed. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Yamil's?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yep.
And that's everyone.
Okay, Chris, can I ask you a question, um, the bills for the, um, were they for Friday the 19th or for the, for Monday the 22nd, do you remember?
Well, it's, it's, uh, I'm sorry, because they're kind of one and the same, they're, they're, we put them out on the Friday, and we typically had paid them on Monday, so if I got the dates mixed up, I apologize.
That's okay, um, we'll go with what's in the minutes here, and, uh, I'd like to make a motion to ratify the February 22nd bills.
Do I have a second, please?
This is Ralph, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, then, Doreen, if you take it, please. Okay, Suzanne Touch? Agreed. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Yamil?
Yes.
Mark Wat, Mark Watkins, sorry?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone. That motion carries then. Okay, then we're going to go forward to the approval of the February 20, 21 minutes, please. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mr. Touch, do I have a second, please?
It's Pete, I'll second it.
Great, so I've got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, then, Doreen, if you take that, please. Okay, Suzanne Touch? Agreed. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Yamil's?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? Sorry, Colin, did I, I may have missed a response from you. Okay, and John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everyone. Perfect, that motion carries as well. All right, now we get to my favorite motion, unless, do we have any further discussion on anything that we've missed that someone needs to bring forward at this time?
Yes, it, that's it, for one last comment, I was taught, saw my type of pride for all the progress they're making on replacing the ban shell, and I appreciate your discussions, uh, regarding cost work, version A, version B. Version B, the one you seem to be favoring, has a, a roof that goes over the seating area that's actually separate from the ban shell, am I correct on that?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I was just caught by surprise, I wasn't thinking fast enough for your discussions, but if you wanted to, uh, and costs got to be out of control, you could do that roof over the seating area as a separate project. It always adds money to the total bill if you have to mobilize and demobilize a second time, but it's just a thought, uh, I had as, I contemplated this, uh, this meeting, and I, I thought I'd inject it for you. That's all.
Okay, Danny, we, I'm starting to think of the best ways to offset the cost for that, even though it's a project that has to go forward. But I'm sure the committee will continue to work on that. Okay, so now I need, uh, again, coming to our favorite part of the, of our meetings.
And, 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 uh, my favorite part is saying, hey, can Ralph, John, and Mark stay on, uh, for a brief park meeting right after this meeting? Yeah, you all, you all hate me, bro.
They can, I'm sure they can, um.
Sure they can.
I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
There you go, now you're, now you're hearing me, brother, oh, we got a motion and a second. Look how quickly they jump on for that. Okay, moving along, so we've got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All right, Doreen, you're going to bring us home. Okay, I'm going to first ask, who was the second?
Pete.
Uh, Ralph Touch. Okay, thank you. Okay, roll call, Suzanne Touch? Uh, agreed. Pete Merkel?
Yes.
Yamil's?
Yes.
Mark Watkins?
Yes.
Ralph Touch?
Yeah.
Colin Boyer? And John Rothenberger?
Yes.
And that's everybody. Okay, well, our mission, our meeting, thank you, first of all, everybody, thank you for all your hard work, everything that you do. Uh, our meeting is officially adjourned, and then Chris, you, everybody can drop off except for those folks that need to continue to talk to Chris, okay?